Good evening and welcome. My name is Taylor Kingman. As President of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I would like to welcome all of you who are at present at tonight's pre-agenda board meeting. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SAISD. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most of the items on our agenda this evening will be discussed tonight and voted upon at our regular board meeting. As members of the SASD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, we do have a public comment item on our agenda that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team on an item that is not on our action agenda or an action item on the agenda an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on the public comment form located at the back of the room. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so we can move through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption in the meeting will not be tolerated at any time. Comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicated on the form you filled out. And any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. If you have a pending grievance being processed by the district, please remember you will not be permitted to speak about this during public comment. Also, please understand if you offer public comment that the board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments since the matter has not been posted for discussion. I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, thank you for being here and for your support of SASD. We do have a quorum this evening. Our entire board team is present. And with that, if everyone will stand and join me in the pledges of allegiance to the United States and Texas. I like it when the students are here and they get to do that. Okay. Next, we're going to move forward. There was no one who signed up for public comment, so I might go ahead and move forward with conducting our finance and audit committee workshop, and Mr. Dindell will lead us through this.
Thank you, Dr. Kingman. We've got several reports tonight. First on our agenda is a bond financial advisor update, and Jeff Robert is going to help us with that. Welcome, Jeff. Good to see you again.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Dr. Moran, Jeff Robert with Hilltop Securities. Before I get into my presentation, I think this is the first time I've seen you all since prior to the election.
Jeff, I'm not sure your microphone's on, or maybe you're just taller than the...
Okay, let me raise it up. I'm sorry. Since it's been a while since I've been here, I want to say first and foremost, congratulations on the election. As a native San Angelo, and I was very excited with those results, and very excited to see the improvements that are made in the district, some of the schools that I actually attended. So that was very, very exciting. If you'll... Okay. I'm going to go in this... I'm going to try not to read all through this, but as you're aware, the legislature just wrapped up their session, and Senate Bill 4 was one of the bills that passed, and I think it was filed on February the 6th. It's already received Governor's signature, and clearly you had done a lot of work in leading up to the election well before this bill was even contemplated. But in a nutshell, what this bill will do, it's going to increase the homestead exemption from $100,000 to $140,000. This exemption will likely result in a decrease in the district's taxable value of somewhere between $650 and $700 million. Now, the way that the hold harmless for this bill will work is that any bond issue that closes prior to September 1st or settles prior to September 1st of 2025 will receive a full hold harmless. Now, what that means is that you'll be receiving state funding to offset that increase in the homestead exemption. Now, back in 2003, they said that they would hold harmless all school district authorizations, meaning your entire election amount. Unfortunately, this go-around, the language says they'll only hold harmless the bond issuances or actual bonds sold prior to 9-1... or excuse me, yes, 9-1 of '25. So the percentage that you would roughly receive in terms of a hold harmless amount on this bond issue is about 10%. So if you think about a $397 million bond issue, if we're able to do all of it, interest being roughly the same, we're talking about close to $80 million of hold harmless funding. So our goal is going to be to issue as much of the authorization as possible in order to maximize that hold harmless amount, because anything you don't receive in hold harmless amount instead comes from the local taxpayers. So we had to kind of shift gears with our strategy. Initially, we talked about doing two issuances, but if we do that because of this new legislation that we knew nothing about when we were talking about it way back when, we have to kind of pivot. We're still going to adhere to the tax rate constraints that were promised to the electorate, to the voters, but we're looking to sell as much as we can to maximize the amount of money coming from the state rather than that being made up by the local taxpayers. Could go to the second slide here, just to kind of talk about where interest rates are. This is what's called the Bond Buyer 20-Year Index. This gives the 20-year rate for A-rated bond issues, 20 different bond issues. It's not meant to be an apples-to-apples comparison. It's just to kind of give you an idea of where the overall market is. The graph in the background shows where this has gone, all the way from 1981, there on the far left, to where we are now. You can kind of see that big dip in rates during COVID. We have come back up, admittedly, kind of the tariff talk, as well as uncertainty with the, for lack of a better description, the big beautiful bill. A lot of that uncertainty has caused rates to come up some, and you can see in that blue graph there in the top right corner what this index has done over the last year. So for our purposes, we're projecting about a 4.9% interest rate right now, but right now, it is very volatile. There's going to be a lot of school district bond issues in the market because there were a lot of May authorizations, and they're all aware of that hold harmless as well and want to maximize it. So we're hoping for under 5% is the goal. So if we're able to do the entire amount, which based upon our projections, right now we can, we would actually start off at .36, which is the amount or the rate that was communicated to the voters, that 27.26 INS tax rate increase. And then with very conservative tax-based assumptions, we've got that declining slightly over time. That light... excuse me, that line will come down more if your actual tax-based growth exceeds what our assumptions are. So I wouldn't get fixated and say, oh, we're going to be there forever, because this is probably what the line looked way back in 2000... who was the last one? 2009? Was that it? Yeah, I think that's right. So we kind of had the same thing, and as you know, if you look historically, that INS tax rate came down quite a bit from the initial high of, I believe, 33 was roughly where we were at. One of the things that is helping us right now is that the initial values that we received from Tom Green County Appraisal District are a little higher than what we were projecting. You know, back when we were running numbers, we were around 7.1, 7.2. The most recent update that we've gotten from the CAD or from the County Appraisal District is about $7.5 billion. So that extra value is allowing us to hopefully be able to issue that entire authorization. But you can see after that, we're only assuming 1% for, what is that, roughly nine years, and then only half a percent after that. So that line that you saw in that graph on the previous page is based upon these growth assumptions. If you grow just 2% or 3%, you'll continue to see that line kind of come down even further. So we try to be very conservative, and the hope is that certainly the district's actual tax-based growth will outpace this. So what the board is being asked to consider at the next meeting is what's called a parameter bond order. In a nutshell, it's allowable under 1371 of the government code. The board delegates final pricing authority typically to the superintendent. And Dr. Brandon, I'm not going to read your entire title there. You've got one of the longer ones there I've seen. But to Dr. Moran or Dr. Brandon, the board establishes and approves the sale parameters that are included in the document, and if those parameters can be met, then Dr. Moran and/or Dr. Brandon can approve the issuance of the bonds on behalf of the district. And the reason we do that is just to give us some flexibility. Used to not be allowed to do that, and the first and third Mondays of the month were real busy for school districts because most of you meet on those dates. So we got a little flexibility by being allowed to do these parameter orders. So pretty much all the districts that I work with utilize this method to sell their bonds. And so the parameters that are included in the order that you'll consider next week, again, the delegated pricing officers, superintendent, or CFO, maximum allowable principal amount. It's a not-to-exceed amount, so if we get to pricing date and we determine that we can't issue all of it, we'll do as much as we can, but this would allow us, if we can get to that, to feel comfortable, the entire 397. I've put 575 in there just in the event that rates spike a little bit, and I feel like even if they do spike, we're still going to want to make sure we issue an amount prior to 9-1, because again, we want to get that hold harmless. So we really don't have time to probably come back to the board, reapprove another parameter, so I've got purposefully a higher interest rate in there. Final maturity date would be a 30-year issuance, and the delegation expiration, while it says 365 days, I would imagine we'll probably have the transaction completed within a month or month and a half. And then the last page, admittedly, Dr. Moran, Dr. Brandon, and I haven't talked about a specific date, but wanted to kind of give you maybe a hypothetical schedule of events of the different things that we're going to be doing leading up to the actual pricing of the bonds. This would be an assumed July 8 bond sale, and you can see all the different things that we need to do and all the different parties that are involved there on the left in order to take the necessary steps to bring the issuance to market, close it in this case by August 7th. But again, hate to use this term, but kind of a drop-dead date of 8/31. We've got to get this thing sold and closed before September 1st. So I know I flew through that. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. You're running this part. I have a question. So, one, Jeff, you did our refinance on our previous bond six years ago, and we did a parameter order at that point in time, which I think saved us .3 cents because of when you were able to execute it with not being a board meeting. The rates dropped, and you were... y'all were... it was Jeff, I guess, was it Jeff Bright at that time? But we were able to do it, and we saved a significant percentage, so just for the whole board, like that parameter order has worked our favor previously. And so I think, even though it seems weird to give... you know, we've set these maximums and minimums, but it allows us to make sure that if the rates drop on June 30th, for whatever reason, we can lock that in even though we don't have a meeting that week. So that's just for the board. But question, when we set a 30-year, how long till we can... could we refinance if rates dropped again in the future?
That's a good question. So I would assume we're going to have either a nine- or 10-year call. So if we were to refinance at tax-exempt interest rates, we'd be about nine or 10 years from being able to do that. Now, on the 2015... or excuse me, 2019 was... or 20, 2020 was when we refunded. So taxable... actually taxable interest rates were so low because of COVID that we were able to save $7.8 million doing that refinancing then. So if taxable rates were to get at an extremely low level, we could refinance it at any time. If we want to do it at tax-exempt rates under current federal law, we have to do it within 90 days of the call date. And so the reason I say nine- or 10-year call provision is if we make it any shorter than that, that starts to impact your initial interest rate on the issuance, and we don't want to do that. It used to be prior to the tax changes in 2017, I believe it was, 2017 or 18, you used to be able to do one, what we call tax-exempt refunding at any time. There's a big push to try and reinstate that, but under current law, we can't do that. We can only do it within 90 days of the call date.
Sorry, one last thing. I apologize. And then the... just to make sure I heard it correctly, whatever we can, depending on what rates do, we will work to maximize, keeping the rate for the public what we told them it would be, we're going to maximize the state funding of that... of our bond. So if it's... if we can only finance 360 million of it, we will go all 360 of it and get the entirety of the hold harmless that we can do and keep the INS rate where we promised we would.
That's right. We're not going to exceed the level that was communicated to the voters, and we want to do as much as we can to do exactly what you said.
That answered my question, so, yeah. Any other questions for Mr. Robert? All right. As we proceed, thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you all. Again, congratulations.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Okay. Merle? Okay. All right. Next, we've got a bond project update, and Dr. Brandon's going to help us with that or start off.
Good evening, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, Board of Trustees. Quick introduction before Mr. Lopez gets started. We have with us this evening our new Director of Construction, Carl Danheim. He's currently with Plainview ISD in this role, and so I'm going to let him tell you just a little bit about his connection to San Angelo before we get into Park Hill's presentation.
Super excited to be here, be part of the San Angelo ISD team. I'm looking forward to getting here and we getting started. So other than that, the connection to here is I grew up in Merton, Texas, graduated high school at Eirion County, so it's... and have been back a few times since, so it's a coming home for me. So like I say, looking forward to getting here.
It's great to have you, Mr. Danheim, and it's good to hear that you've lived in the suburbs of San Angelo for a season of your life.
I did. I did. All right. Well, thank you all.
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Great to be back. Dr. Moran, Dr. Kingman, and Board of Trustees. We actually have worked before in Plainview. We're wrapping up bond projects, so it's like getting the old team back together when he's coming over. So it's a great transition, and we couldn't have asked for a better person to partner with on these projects. So great job. I know a lot of people were probably going after him, so his connection to San Angelo is very helpful, I'm sure. So I'm going to do a quick recap of some of the items we talked about last time. We talked about some of the packages for construction, some of the delivery methods for executing those packages, and then just some of the teams that will be working on collaborating to make those packages happen. I don't think anything has changed since the last time we presented it, this project's timeline, really just an overview of when each project would be complete, starting with some of the critical capital renewal and safety projects, all the way through the large renovation of Central High School, and then really just everything in between. You break that down and start looking at each package and how those would be designed, bid, constructed, and then moved into, and you start getting a scheduled graph that looks a little bit more complicated to break it all down on a little bit more micro scale. And to make that happen, we talked about last time, the various construction methods, starting with... we didn't spend a lot of time on job order contracting and just direct selection of vendors, but for some of the smaller projects and just HVAC replacements, y'all already kind of do this, and this is something that the district can manage a lot of times without needing an architect or an engineer. So I think we call that job order contracting in a lot of... on a lot of these slides. The next level up on a larger, little bit more complicated project, we talked about a project that might have a roof replacement and HVAC replacement and maybe a parking lot replacement where you're starting to get multiple items done at the same project. Those type of projects a lot of times lend themselves to a competitive sealed proposal. So in this scenario, the owner, the school district, would bring on an architect and engineer. They would design the project, and then once complete, they'd put the project out for bid to various contractors. Then the contractor comes onboard and starts to execute the project. And so you can see the structure of that. And through that process, it's just architects and the engineers that are putting together the opinions of cost and making sure everything is completely scoped out. The big difference with construction manager at risk is you see the construction manager's actually brought onboard during the design phase. So they're involved in the meetings early on when we're talking about what type of piping to use or what type of mechanical units, and they offer their input on how this might affect the schedule or the cost. And they charge a fee for that. So you have to pay them to come onboard on early, but the value you see after is a reduction in change orders typically. So they have an idea of the scope and they have additional allowances. So I think previously there was a question last time about finding asbestos. And so in either one of these methods, if there is asbestos found around a pipe that was unknown previously, that would still be an additional cost. Now, in the construction manager role, a lot of times they'll have a few more allowances, and especially if they know there's been some asbestos on the project, they might have an asbestos kind of scheduled value and then asbestos contingency. And so that might not affect the price, but if they can say, your drawings in our previous meetings showed that there was asbestos in only the gym, and now we're finding asbestos also in the auditorium, that would still warrant a change to the construction amount. And so I don't think that that was fully clear last time. I think we kind of said that they would just have to eat that. But if it's something that was never discussed and not in the drawings, and they don't have an allowance, so that's part of the nice thing about having a CMAR is a lot of times we'll have those conversations, and they'll say, well, there's multiple places here. We think you should have an allowance for this, and they have a completely open schedule of values. And so if they need to use that allowance, then that's there for them. And if they don't, that allowance goes back to you. So it's having those conversations through the design process to where you have more of that covered. So it... the more complicated the project, the more phases, the better it is to have them onboard early, to have those conversations about an asbestos allowance or making sure that we have all the asbestos covered. But I wanted to make that clear, that if it's something that's not shown on the drawings and never discussed before, and there's not a specific contingency for it, then there would still be an add to the project that the CMAR would not cover at that point. Does that make sense? I know last time, that doesn't quite match the answer from last time.
And like my question's always been, can I ask you a question? But it's like, okay, what's the difference between competitive sealed proposal?
Yeah.
You know, like you said, CMAR puts that in there.
Right.
If they find it, then it's covered.
Well...
Have to throw it, but then competitive sealed proposal, they just come right back in and say, hey, we don't know there's asbestos in there.
Yeah, and a lot of times what we see is that with competitive sealed proposals, a lot of times they'll try to find those during the bidding process and not bring them up so that they can add it on later. So that's why we see a lot more change orders when it comes to competitive sealed proposals because they're not involved, and they don't have really the relationship to start bringing some of those items because they don't have an incentive when the final bid comes out to say, hey, we think there might be asbestos here. Their incentive is to get it as low as possible. But with the CMAR, their incentive is to have something there to cover some of those items that they kind of know about.
And then the CMAR has a guaranteed maximum price, right?
Correct. Yeah.
How's that work? Like if they go over that, what happens?
So they can't go over it without authorization from the school. And so you're getting a bid price, say $10 million, and if they come in and say, well, it's going to be $100,000 over that because of a line that we found, I mean, you can tell them we're not replacing the line. I mean, they don't really have authority to replace that line until you give it to them. And so if anything comes up like that, that gets brought to us and we review it. And obviously, all these projects will have a certain amount of contingency that allows for minor things that come up. A lot of times, you know, a $10,000 leak on a water line or something like that could be covered within the existing project contingency, but it's the larger items, like having to replace a line that we didn't know we had to replace, those are... that can be a major, major change that has to be discussed. And the fact is, that would have been a part of the price. It would have just made the bid price higher originally. So I mean, it's part of our job to try to make sure we have all that documented as much as possible, but there's just certain things that when you get under the ground, nobody can really account for. And the only way to account for it is to dig it and find it and then try to fix it. Hopefully, it fits within the contingency there. If not, you pay more, but you would have paid more in the first place because you're adding, you know, fries to your order of just burger and a drink. And if you would have added the fries originally, it would have cost more, and you're adding them a little later.
RJ, can I ask a quick question? So if the scope changes, no matter it's competitive sealed proposal or CMAR, if the actual scope changes...
Scope changes.
Then, and they can prove the scope has changed...
Correct.
It requires a change order and approval.
Yes.
If we're moving dirt to do the foundation, and it just takes seven days longer to do the dirt work than they had budgeted for...
Yes.
That would not be on our... that would not cost us.
That's correct.
That's where the... it's those sort of savings where you would find the difference, correct?
Yes, yes, exactly. And if they say, well, we didn't realize the soil report said this, and you're requiring, you know, that we do above and beyond what we thought, well, that's in the soil report and that's in the design, they're at risk to complete that, for sure. But yes, great point. Added scope, either one, would be justified.
Additional questions? George?
I'm thinking of one. No, and then like, what's the JOC? What job?
Job order contract.
What do we do on that?
That's just another name for a direct hire, or if it's a lower amount and you can just have somebody come out and do it, or if it's somebody on by-board. So it's just saying really you wouldn't have to have an engineer or an architect necessarily do that.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is, I mean, it's a $397 million thing, and I don't want to be throwing money because some guy missed something.
Right, right.
That's what worries me is that someone's going to... there's going to be a lot of misses. Well, I missed this, and it's going to cost an additional $200,000, or I missed this. I just want to make sure we don't get into that habit of just one every week, change order, every week, change order, change order, change order. Because that's taxpayer dollars, and that's what they want us to watch out for, so...
Yeah. I fully agree.
I've got a, I guess, a quick question, like kind of... so like these estimates that y'all had for like Glen and Lakeview and Central, those were based off of y'all's firm's estimations, right?
Correct.
So like, when you get these large contracts, like these large companies coming in, how do we know that they're not just going... I mean, not that we don't trust you, but like, how do we know we're getting like an actual, real market price?
Yeah.
And we're not just going... no one's just kind of basically regurgitating numbers that y'all already created?
Well, I wish we could say every time we hit the budget exactly. I mean, or below it, but that doesn't always happen. That's the goal. Recently, in a new elementary in Midland ISD, it came in about $8 million under budget. So I mean, that's how you can see the market plays a factor. We also have the opportunity to... We also have the opportunity to provide alternates like we've done on Fannin and McGill. So when those came under budget at the previous McGill addition, we were able to add additional classrooms based on it coming under budget. So that's the goal. I mean, we're, we're planning to design probably five to 10% under the budget and, and see how the market reacts. Because just depending on tariffs happening or a slowdown in the market because of tariffs, we could see, you know, the projects coming in one way or another. So we try to provide alternates like two classroom or four classroom additions that you can say, well, it came under, well under, y'all can add those classrooms. Or, or it came in right in on budget, the classrooms are going to have to wait. So I know there was, there's been discussions already about McGill and adding a playground. They talked about, should it be one playground or two playgrounds added? Well, we talked about, well, maybe one playground is the base bid, the second playground is an alternate. And if prices come in well, you can get the full phase three kind of playground layout. And if they come in a little higher, but within budget, then, then you get the original playground. So that's kind of how we account for, for those items. And we also do cost estimates when we do just kind of our, our block layout of schematic design. So we'll do a test of the scope and the budget to make sure we're on track. And if we don't think we're on track at that point, we'll say, well, we might need to look at reducing this space or changing a material. And then if we feel like we're, we're on track based on the market and our other projects, then we go to the next step of kind of doing the 3D and we start looking at the exterior design. And then we check the price at that point. And if, at that point, say, well, I don't know if we can do as much brick, we might have to do a little more stucco to get it within what the market's telling us. So we have about four checks on our side. The nice thing about when you bring the CMAR, not only are we doing the checks on what we're seeing as bids go and, and kind of what the market says, we also get the, the contractor can ask his mechanical sub or his brick subcontractor to look at the drawings and give them an idea of what they're seeing. So it's a constant check and it's a, it's what we're most concentrated on during the lifecycle of design.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. Bid process also has a lot to do with the availability, the willing labor force in the area too. If they've got jobs that they don't have going, they want to keep their people, a lot of times they'll, they'll sharpen their pencil a little bit to get the work so they can keep their, their folks busy too. So it's another, another factor.
That's what happened in '08. We were lucky back then in '08 where, where, you know, we got that pass and then, you know, you had the housing crisis and all that. The bottom fell out of the housing industry. So we had a lot of work that came in under budget. We were very, very lucky.
Very fortunate.
Very fortunate. I mean, I hate to say that, that the collapse of the housing economy was a plus for us, but it was.
It was a Godsend for SAISD back then.
Yeah.
Sure was. And St. Angelo in general, workforce there, so. Anyway. Additional questions for Mr. Lopez?
And just for clarification, when, because I know you talked about JOC was just kind of like a hiring, so just to make sure, like I have an example of that in my head, that 'd be like hiring Hellis, Hellis?
Yeah.
Hellis to do the turf fields, which we do all the time.
Exactly.
Without a bond project.
Yes.
And letting them do what they do well, which is doing a turf field and not paying an architecture fee or a construction manager fee for them to come in and redo our fields when they do that all the time.
Normally it's like for like, where you really, you already have a design because you have something in place. So it's like, if you're going to replace a camera, you're not necessarily going to hire an architect or engineer to just replace that camera because you pretty much know what you need and you don't have to pay somebody else to do it.
Okay. Architects can't come up with a different football field.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly. I mean, we could. I don't know that you need it on some of those. And so now we've provided a, a matrix of delivery methods and potential managers of each one of those packages. I think you have the, the one cheater, but I have a breakdown of each one of those project packages, starting with package one, safety and security. That one has about an $8 million budget. We're showing that as a job order contract or competitive sealed proposal. And we're showing that that would be either managed by the district or managed locally by KFW architects. They have submitted their qualifications currently. Y'all have our qualifications as well. And a lot of those projects that are listed in there would fall right into what they're good at doing and have done for y'all in previous bonds as well. Package two, we're showing a $35 million budget, the delivery methods. Really, we're showing multiple delivery methods because you have everything from, you know, a $50,000 re-turfing all the way to a two and a half million dollar replacement of roofs and HVAC and parking lot. So that kind of gives you a broader range of delivery methods because it has everything from simple replace like for like all the way to a little bit more complicated and engineered projects. And so we're, we're showing job order contract, competitive sealed proposal and design build on that delivery method. And the design build, that would be some of the contractors, they're subcontractors so they don't do CMAR type work, but they can come onboard early and help with some of the pricing and some of the design of the projects before you bid it out. And that's some of your HVAC contractors can do that. And so that gives you flexibility to bring some of those on for those projects. Any questions? I know we didn't run through, I know the, I think the full list of delivery methods had design build on there, but that's the first time we might have talked about that Package three, Crockett Elementary, we're showing 9.9 million budget, competitive sealed proposal. It's still a pretty straightforward project on an existing site. And we're showing that as a Park Hill design with SK engineers doing the civil engineering. And they've also, they've already done the survey and the geotech work on that. And next would be McGill Elementary, 15.83, showing that as CSP. It's still a pretty straightforward project now that we've got the main building there. And we're showing that we would do the second phase of that with SK engineers on that as well, which they've already been part of phase one and it would be just getting that back up and running. Next, we're showing Fannin Elementary addition with a budget of 17 million, showing that would be one of the last CSP projects of the, the, the school additions and showing KFW architects with SK engineers on that. So it's a pretty exciting one for them to be able to put a new face on and do kitchen, cafeteria. It's on kind of a, a single site there, really matches pretty well for the, the scope and qualifications that KFW submitted. And they would be working with SKG like they do on a majority of their projects as well here locally. The next, we're showing some of the demolition projects and y'all are already handling some of these demolition projects yourselves. And so this is showing job order contracting through the district. And really, a lot of these are not, I mean, they don't have to stay, if something comes up and you decide you need help from an architect or engineer, you can definitely still come, we'll help with what you need help with. We're just trying to find what's kind of already worked for the district and, and outline that on here. And we could come back every month and say, well, this project or that project, you know, the, the different delivery methods, but we wanted to try to take a shot at it right at the beginning and see what you think. Glenn New Middle School with the 122 million budget. This one really lends itself to construction manager at risk. I know we previously talked about, well, maybe it could be a competitive sealed proposal, but the fact that it's got that existing school there and you'd be building new with the students on site, that would give you a lot of opportunity to work with the CMAR and make sure that they have the badging and everything figured out and the phasing plan. And really need to make sure we have one person kind of managing all of that. And you, you get that with the, the CMAR. And just at the, the price tag, it's, it'll be a lot to, to manage over the course of design. So it'll be good to have a contractor onboard early. Next is the Lakeview High School additions and renovations, about 46.4 million, showing that one as well to be a construction manager at risk with Park Hill and SKG on that one as well. And as far as the, the CMARS, I know a lot of them will tell you that they could probably do them all, but I think when you advertise, and we can help with the advertisement, you can allow for CMARS to only apply for certain projects or apply for them all if they want to. And so if you want to make sure that, you know, Central has somebody watching over it and Glen has somebody different, that gives you the opportunity. But if a CMAR comes in and says, well, we can do them both for combined reduction in cost and schedule, then that might give you something else to look at. So you still have the, the flexibility, even though it's the same delivery method, there's potential for one CMAR to do one or one CMAR to, to really do them all. And so I think the options are what you'd want to see and then you can kind of go from there as far as the ranking and selection process. Central High School, we're showing 128.17 million, CMAR as well, very complicated project as far as having existing facilities, demolition, build new, renovation. We're showing Park Hill with SKG engineers on that as well. And then package eight, Athletic Improvements, 12.18. And this is one where we're showing both job order contracting and competitive sealed proposal, since some of these fields will be like for like and it's not going to be, need the engineering necessarily, but there are connector pieces like handicap accessible sidewalks and bleachers and some smaller concession buildings that would need engineering. So we're showing KFW with SK engineers or the district on, on those projects. All right. So that's, that's an initial kind of schedule of potential delivery methods and potential managers of each project. Any questions on that?
Who are you going to have as an engineer for Glenn Middle School? You have Park Hill as an architect.
Yeah. So, so right now, we actually do have in-house engineering. And so that would be the only one that we would have our in-house engineers working on. So we've got, we love working with the SKG for sure. And we talked to them and they really, they're excited about all these projects, but we think the Wind Middle School's kind of a perfect standalone site for teaming with our own in-house engineers.
Additional questions for Mr. Lopez? It's going to be a busy time.
Yeah. It's very exciting. So we've got a lot of people ready to jump onboard for sure.
Yes, sir.
On the design build, I know one of the, when we were talking about that, could you kind of give the board an idea? One, one of the reasons we had an interest in that is the availability of choosing local contractors for pieces, components of that work.
Yeah.
So could you kind of, kind of talk through that with the board so they understand that part of it?
Yeah. Like I said, I think a lot of the, the CMARS, oh, the CMARS that you want to bring onboard would be a little too big and wouldn't really make sense, but some of your local contractors that could really add value early on and help with some of the recommendations for the package, I think E3 is, or one of the ones we talked about and some others. This gives you the, the flexibility to, to bring those on and not be surprised, once you get under construction, what you're going to get. Because sometimes if it's not an exact like for like, or even sometimes if it is an exact like for like, you might not know until construction gets started what some of the assumptions are. And this lets the assumption phase of that not be an issue when you can do design bid or design build.
And you mentioned CMAR, like if you had a, that you could theoretically put multiple CMAR projects, how would you say, CMAR projects to, together? But traditionally as, like just as the consultant part of right now, you would not recommend that we put all three of big projects under one company.
Yeah. Right now, I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't recommend that.
Yeah.
It would have to be some type of unique qualification where they really think that there's a lot of time or potential cost savings for doing it at the same time. But having two different CMARS, especially when projects are going at the same time, then they can kind of focus on their projects and sometimes kind of compete with each other like y'all saw with Fannin and McGill where, you know, you had them both trying to show what they could do.
Good. Additional questions?
All right. Let's get going.
Thanks, RJ. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Next up, we have a legislative update and Dr. Moran is going to help us with that.
All right. Mr. Ramirez, you can toggle through as I talk you through the slide presentation. I'll make this quick, but this 89th legislative session, we had 557 bills that were education related through the House and 327 through the Senate. I'm going to highlight just a few of them. House Bill 2 is the first one. And House Bill 2 is the school finance bill that made it to the governor's desk and was signed into law June 4th, giving 8.5 billion in new funding to public schools in Texas. 4.2 billion of that is earmarked for teachers. And I'd like to just publicly say how thankful I am that we have a great senator and a great representative in Austin working on our behalf. Senator Perry and Representative Darby did a great job of staying in constant contact with my office and asking for input, and I really appreciate that. I think they listened and some of the things that we shared with them, they advocated for and that was very helpful. Interestingly enough, in the, in the money that was allocated, on the next slide, you're going to see that districts like us that are more than 5,000 students, the funding that's required by the state for three to four-year experienced teachers is $2,500 per teacher. Five years plus will get $5,000 more per year, and that's ongoing. That's not a one-time deal. So this is very good, but you'll notice that years one and two are missing. And zero through two, actually. And we have in our district, 100 teachers who are years zero to two. And so significant. I think that's important for us to take note of as we go because it's not included in that, that money. It's included in money that will be part, more discretionary on our end, that will have to apply to not just those zero to two-year teachers, but all of our staff, the non-exempt staff that we have, which is about half of our 1,800 employees. The next slide shows that smaller districts are actually going to be compensated a little heavier by the state, three to four-year experience at 4,000, five plus at 8,000. That's for teachers only. And typically, when we say teachers, we include librarians, counselors, instructional coaches. The state was very clear that that, this money does not include those people. These are for people that are in a classroom giving direct instruction to teachers, even for those interventionists that pull kids out. Unless they teach a half schedule or more with kids in a classroom, the state did not recognize them as teachers. So we'll be charged with finding a way, as you can imagine, if I'm an interventionist and my friend who is in a classroom is getting that pay increase, that, that's the conversation that's going on now across the state. How do we do that? Because we want to be fair and equitable and we want, we want to treat our employees right. The next slide just shows a little bit more specific information about SAISD, the amount that will need to go to teacher pay raises, the basic cost allotment, which is new. This is a new thing, instead of applying it to the basic allotment. is a new thing. Instead of applying it to the basic allotment, the state came back and said, we're going to raise the basic allotment fifty five dollars per kid, but we're going to give schools a basic cost allotment of a hundred and six dollars more for variable costs and things that are not fixed, but maybe, you know, things that the district might need to spend money on, not related to teacher pay increases, to keep our doors open in our our school running on a daily basis. So you can see some of the figures there. The next slide is exactly what I referred to a moment ago, teacher counts. We have six hundred and ninety-three teachers with five-plus years' experience and ninety-six teachers with three to four years' experience. House Bill Two continued. They applied school safety money, which we're very thankful for. That'll help, basically doubling the per student allocation and more than doubling the per campus allocation. So we should see some relief there on our, as we budget. And then special education funding, we, when we evaluate a student, takes time, takes personnel. The state recognized that. They're going to give a thousand dollars per evaluation. We did, as you can see, one hundred and eighty evaluations last year. So if this holds true, then that would be the amount that we would receive in the coming year. And then the next, you can see there was a bump in CTE funding and then teacher prep because they're, the state is upping the ante, if you will, with regard to certified teachers. And to clarify, we want all of our teachers to be certified, but with a teacher shortage, it's more and more difficult to find certified teachers. So in some core subjects, let's say we have a math-degreed person, but they're not a certified teacher, we might actually hire that individual to teach math, and then we put them on a a plan to become certified within a prescribed amount of time, usually a year. I think we can extend it out to two years, but you can see by twenty nine thirty, the state's going to require all core teachers be certified, or they can't be in that classroom. That's going to be a real challenge for the state. The next is House Bill Six. House Bill Six was a student discipline bill that has some real benefits for us as well. And this is really to engage and involve parents more, to empower teachers, to help us with students that are out of control, even elementary kids with behaviors. Up until now, well, as a matter of just recent years, we could not suspend elementary students. But there is a time when an elementary student is so out of control, we need to protect the classroom, and the parent may need to take the child home for a day, two, maybe three. But that has not been allowed for kids under the age of ten, and now it will be. Also, in school suspension, there's been a limit of three days, and some sometimes we need a little bit more than three days to get things ironed out for some children and as we work with parents. Vaping was a mandatory D AEP placement. Now it's a May place an AEP on the first offense, and that's a really big relief for public schools because most schools weren't able to abide by that anyway. AEPs were not big enough. It's an epidemic. Vaping is an epidemic. I don't want to put Tony on the spot, but I know we had some plumbing sewer lines that were clogged and had to be unblocked. And I don't know how many hundreds and hundreds of vape pens are being flushed and clogging our sewer lines. I know that happened at Central last year. So but anyway, it's a regular occurrence. And then a virtual option for expelled students in the D AEP where we can actually collect ADA for those kids. So that's a little bit about House Bill Six. There's a lot more to it, but very thankful for the movement there. House Bill Twenty Seven is an additional requirement for graduation, half credit of financial literacy for graduating incoming ninth-grade kids. So this is something that every school in the state is having to immediately pivot to make sure that we give those kids that option. It's an elective course, but now it's mandatory. And so as you can imagine, when everyone has to take a course, you either have to give up a little ground on classes you're offering with personnel in mind, or you have to add personnel. So we'll be coming back to you on that to give an update. Senate Bill Two, the voucher bill, everybody's aware of that, passed and signed into law May third, and it'll cost a billion dollars in the first biennium, expected to go way up in the next, ten thousand dollars per child, and then those kids not having to take the STAR test if they're allowed to attend the private school they apply for. Senate Bill Four increases, you heard this earlier from Mr. Robert, the homestead exemption increasing to one hundred and forty thousand. Senate Bill Ten, requiring the display in a conspicuous place in each classroom, a durable poster or framed copy of the Ten Commandments, sixteen inches wide, twenty inches tall, and has to include the text of the Ten Commandments in a size and typeface legible to a person with average vision from anywhere in the classroom. You can see that that was a, an absolute agenda item for someone. And that's just going to be something that, again, when there's a law passed, we'll abide by it. You know, there's a lot of opinions on that, and it'll be, it'll cost money and time. But I don't think anybody disagrees with the principles of the Ten Commandments, but mandating that the way they did, it's it's definitely a political agenda. And there's many more. So that's the update on the legislative session. It's over. And now it's time to find out what all the details mean and how to sort through all that. But be glad to answer any questions if you need.
Dr. Moran, you said we're getting an additional hundred and two dollars per student?
So
And what's our, what's our allotment right now?
So sixty-one sixty is the basic allotment. They're going to add fifty-five dollars to that and then a hundred and six dollars for basic costs that districts have to, you know, like utilities and fuel and all those things. They're trying to address inflation without placing it in the basic allotment, is what they're doing.
Okay, thank you.
That's good for two years.
Yeah, we'll see.
Any other questions for Dr. Moran on all those bills?
So Dr. Moran, you know, typically, we would be working on salaries and everything as we get our budget together for our teachers and staff. When would be a realistic expectation of when we're going to have filtered through all this so we can let them know where we're going to be for next school year?
I'd love to say next week, but it's probably going to be more July-ish or earlier that we can come back. We're we're actually calculating financial runs now, but they're not, they're not close enough for us to feel real good about saying anything publicly that we don't want to get locked in on. I I know that, you know, the teacher raises are there, but we, again, we need to come back and make sure that we can pass a balanced budget and that we address our employees' pay increases as we should, and then still meet the requirements of other expenses that we have as a district. So we'll be working diligently on that and giving you updates as we go, but July is our target to get, to bring something really good to you.
Additional questions? Thank you, Dr. Moran. With that, we'll begin our financial reports for our bills and accounts from May of twenty twenty-five. That starts in your board book on page seven. Page nine shows our current unassigned balance, fund balance at approximately fifty-three million dollars. Also shows about five million dollars procs in committed funds. Of that, one point eight million are revitalization funds and one million are the remainder of the construction projects that we go on, that we have going on right now. So most of that is related to construction or revitalization on those committed funds. Page twelve shows our May revenues and expenditures report. We're in the ninth month of our our school year, so it should be about seventy-five percent of our our budget so far right now. Our our revenues are right at a hundred million, which is seventy-four point nine percent, so right in line with the collection of that. Most of that left is remaining from the state, which they always come in at the end of the year and make your budget whole as far as revenue is concerned. And then our expenditures currently are at a hundred and three million, which is seventy-three point six percent of the total. And of that, we've moved seven million of funds from fund balance into this year's expenses. So they're slightly higher than our than our revenue because they're coming in from last year, from our committed fund balance. Any questions on those revenues and expenses? If not, page thirteen through thirty-five is our May check register. I know a lot of checks there. I know we've had a couple of questions, which Dr. Brandon has already answered from just general inquiries. I'm not sure if anybody else has a specific check that they would like to ask about it. So obviously, we can get that to Dr. Brandon, and he can make sure he gets us an answer on any of those those checks that are written If there are no questions on that, we move to our our monthly investment report and quarterly investment reports. Those are contained on pages thirty-six through forty-four. As far as our monthly investment report is concerned, their total invested funds at the end of May, approximately sixty-nine million, with the total interest earned for the month was two hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-three cents. Interest earned in the general fund only was two hundred and fifty-three thousand, a hundred and sixty-four dollars. Rates are, again, varying from four point three to four point four four percent right now in those pools. Our quarterly investments, actually page forty-two and forty-three, total investments of May thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, at the end of the third quarter, for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, were approximately, were sixty-nine million, a hundred and eighteen thousand, nineteen dollars and eighteen cents. And the total interest earned for the third quarter of the year was eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. And the report also includes the prior quarter, February twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-five. No questions on their investment report? Our tax collection report begins on page, is on page forty-five, shows twenty twenty-four collection rates at ninety-six point nine percent, and our twenty twenty-three collection reports slightly ahead at ninety-seven point two percent. So very close in the collection rate for both due and delinquent funds on Beyond that, page forty-six through fifty shows our POs, over twenty thousand dollars. There are several in there. Too numerous to mention, I'm not sure if anybody's got any questions about any of those reports at all, buying milk, buying fuel, getting ready for the next year. There's the Lakeview AC chiller report that we've worked on, that we've gotten a PO out there. You'll see that in there, too. Our Oaks Plumbing Repair is included in that, which we talked about last week. Any questions about any of those purchase orders over twenty thousand dollars? If not, I think that does include our, that concludes our financial report. Dr. Kingman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dindel. We do have one action. I am tonight, and I think Dr. Brandon's going to start us off, and it's to consider the MOU with WALL ISD for a minor boundary
Good evening again. The, during a routine property audit by Tom Green County Appraisal District, inconsistencies in school district property boundaries were discovered between SISD and WALL ISD. Further investigation revealed the inconsistencies were in relation to current Texas Education Agency district boundary lines between the two districts. So for the last several months, we've kind of worked through that situation with WALL ISD. And then just a few bullets on this for the background. We've looked at different areas that this is, the small inconsistencies, but mostly the the boundary that we share on the eastern portion of San Angel ISD and the western portion of WALL ISD along Country Club Road, some of those properties. And then the good thing is both WALL ISD and San Angel ISD agree of how to resolve the problem. So it's mutual of how we want to fix that, amend the boundary line to conform to current practice, which has been in place for over thirty years. Where individuals have been paying their taxes, we're in agreement, we would like that to remain the place that they're paying their taxes. So no change to students attendance, bus routes, taxes paid by any citizen or student to the to the respective district. And then the Tom Green County Appraisal District agrees also to change the maps to reflect the current practice of both districts. Here you can see how we're working with Walsh-Gaigos, which another positive in the situation is both WALL ISD, San Angel ISD, and Tom Green County Appraisal District use the firm Walsh-Gaigos. And so they've been working through this with all three entities. And you can see from the Texas Education Code thirteen point two-three-one, there's a way to do that with a minor boundary adjustment. The board started that activity with the board meeting on May nineteenth by a resolution authorizing the district to pursue a memorandum of understanding between the two districts. And then both the corrected maps and the agreement would go to the Texas Education Agency to be filed for the respective changes. So we've all kind of talked through it, I know, for several times now, but that's kind of the next step in the process for TEA to be able to make those corrections to meet what our current boundaries are.
So just to reiterate, where people have been paying taxes for the last thirty years is where they will continue to pay taxes. It is just making our maps match where that has been, how that has been done.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Dr. Brandon?
So really, this is just for, we had to make it official because TEA's maps didn't match ours or the appraisal district or WALL. So we're not transferring any land, nothing like that. Nothing's getting transferred over. The people that have been living in these areas that they had them designated as WALL or hadn't designated as San Angelo, they'll, they'll stay the same. Everything's going to stay the same.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so.
Yeah, the inconsistency was not found between the two school districts. It was found with the actual map, the TEA map.
Yep. So it's a cosmetic fix.
Any other board comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
Dr. Kingman, I've moved to approve an MOU with WALL ISD regarding an amendment to the school district's map to correct a clerical error on the district's boundaries with WALL ISD pursuant to the resolution approved by the board at the May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Second.
So I have a motion for Mr. Dindel and a second for Mr. Gallegos. Do I have any further board comments or questions? All right. All in favor say aye. All again say the same. Motion passes seven-zero. All right. Now we're going to move through our proposed agenda. Thank you, Dr. Brandon. For next week, invocation and pledges, recognitions, we'll do the Teacher of the Year recognitions and San Angelo reads, the San Angelo gives donors donation. We're going to get a construction update from Mr. Henry. Anything we need to do on that this evening, Mr. Henry? Okay. Update on academic programs, that'll be Dr. Gomez next week, and we will get that from her next week. Head Start update will be Dr. Brandon and Dr. Gomez next week. Okay. Dr. Brandon, you want to do the Power School update next week as well, so everyone knows what that is and what to expect of the regular board meeting? Public hearing, there's no reason you have to do that twice, so we're going to let you have the public hearing next week. And graduation planning, seems like we were just there, but...
We're always planning.
Always planning. Anything you need to tell us about that tonight, or are we going to do all that next week?
I can give you maybe an appetizer here. But so the Coliseum is going to be under construction for two years. I've talked to the Stock Show and Rodeo Association, and we're planning not to be in the Coliseum for graduation and other activities beginning in September and beyond. So we'll, we're working with the Janelle Center, and we're working out a rough plan so that we can have meaningful graduation ceremonies, but we will not be in the Coliseum for the next two graduation cycles, which has housed Lakeview's graduation for the past few years. So we're going to bring you guys a kind of an overview of what we're doing there, but we've got a good rough plan going right now.
All right. So we will So we've got all those reports, and then we will have consent items. So minutes will be consent items. The bill's financial, accounts and financial statements will continue to be a regular item. The quarterly investment report will be, make that a consent item. Dr. Brandon, do you want to talk to us about the First Financial Bank, just the two-year extension tonight? That way we can make that consent for next week? Or do you want to do that next week?
Yeah, let's, yeah, we can do that, just in case Ms. Chavez wants to make any comment. It is just an extension.
Yeah.
On our first financial, we still have, still, have to get it out yet, so.
So this is the last of our extensions on that, I believe. But we'll, we'll keep that as regular, so we can do that. You are here. You get to do some talking to us three in a row so that we can...
I'm actually going to share the second one with our assistant director, Mr. Benjamin Rocha Settle. He's training to do some of our procurement right alongside with me, so this will be a great opportunity for him to do that tonight. So yes, thank you, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, ladies and gentlemen of the board, and our cabinet team. We just wanted to bring to you tonight our direct delivery bid for renewal for next year. It's a brand-new bid that we received one proposal off of this year, even though we put it out to, to everybody. So we are recommending that Cisco West Texas be approved for the total amount of $1,372,069.40. And just to kind of give a little bit of background and refresher about what this direct delivery bid is, this is the deliveries that are made directly to the campuses each week. They contain primarily like our fresh produce, the à la carte smart snack items that are ordered in high volume, but may vary by campus. A lot of those items do have very quick shelf life, so it prevents us from the risk of losing that product within our warehouse. We also have some of our high-volume bread items on there, smart snack items that are just specifically for high schools, different things like that. You have a tabulation recap inside of your packets tonight, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So the do not award, that's what the rent is for, so someone else will be bringing it?
Yes, some of those, the reasons varied. So, for example, there were some cereal items that we decided not to award. Once we, we're looking forward at some regulations that are coming down the pipe. Some of that has to do with dyes. And so when we were looking at the labels that came through on some of those items, for example, Apple Jacks, Apple Jacks has, has some of the key dyes in them that are going to be, being eliminated, and so we thought it was just a good idea to build our cycle menus now and eliminate those cereal options. Some of them, it was because the pricing was a little too steep to put it on the menu, different things like that. So, and then other items, once we built our cycles, we just decided that it wasn't going to work into our plan, and we weren't going to be able to order enough to actually make it worthwhile for Cisco to bring it into their, to their warehouses for us, because they'll bring it from the manufacturer into their docks and then ship it to us, so.
Any other questions on RFP 2616, the direct delivery?
Ms. Hebert, orange chicken is not in danger of getting cut from the menu, is it?
No, it's not, actually. It's, that is one of our commodity items from the, from our funds that we get from the United States Department of Agriculture, and so we have put that down on our commodity allotment.
Extremely popular, it seems.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
And next year, I will add that we will also have a General Sals, Salsos, oh, I don't know how it's pronounced, I just realized that, chicken on the menu as well as another option to compete with that.
All right. I think that can be consent.
Agreed.
So you're not doing grease traps?
I'm not. I'm going to...
No, you get me for grease traps, and thank you, Tiffany, for that introduction. So we received a few, three proposals for grease trap cleaning RFP 26-15 for the 25-26 school year. After review and tabulation of these proposals, we are recommending that this award be granted to San Angelo Pro Pump in the amount of $38,950.20. This request is budgeted. These are the cleanings that are conducted about three times per school year according to a designated schedule, which you should have in your proposal packets, or the vendor has in the proposal packet in the RFP. This proposal did also include the option for additional campuses and sites or other departments to utilize the awarded vendor as, as they deem fit. All proposals that were submitted did also agree to this, this portion of the proposal. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have pertaining to this RFP.
Any questions regarding?
Can say.
All right. Thank you. You did a great job.
Thank you.
All right. Grease traps, we can also be consent. So now we're going to go to RFP 26-4.
Thank you once again, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, ladies and gentlemen of the board. This is our prepared pizza bid, and we would like to present to you tonight that we received proposals on prepared pizza, RFP 26-4. This year, we did receive one responsive proposal on this item. This is for smart snack compliant pizza that is delivered hot and fresh to our secondary campuses only throughout the school year as ordered in the quantities that those managers order them in. So they're sold in our snack bars to our secondary students. And we're recommending award to South Texas Pizza, locally known as Domino's, in the amount of $130,910. This is a budgeted, this is a budgeted proposal. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Consent?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here this evening. All right. Next, we're going to talk with Mr. Kennedy about thermostat upgrades at Central High
Dr. Moran, Dr. Kingman, and the board, thank you for letting me be here. Just wanted to talk to you a little bit. As y'all know, we have a lot of control issues, and as part of the district's ongoing energy management and facilities improvement efforts, the Tucker Building at Central High School has been identified for an HVAC control upgrade. The proposed project includes the installation of 47 programmable Pelican TC4 thermostats and Pearl Econimiser controllers with associated conduit and low voltage wiring routed to the server room. This update will improve energy efficiency, enable centralized scheduling, and support remote access for HVAC monitoring and control. This is one of our efforts to try to streamline our process and get our HVAC, all of our work in-house. Currently, we have some, some issues with our old Andover system, and this is going to be kind of our test building to do that. We currently, we've gone out for quotes, but the last quotes are due this Thursday.
So we'll have that in Friday Facts?
Yes, you will have it in Friday Facts.
If we want to go on Monday, we'll have it in Friday Facts?
Yes, you will have it in Friday Facts. You'll have it probably Thursday in Friday Facts.
All right.
Yes.
So that'll be a regular item, and just for, we're not replacing any thermostats in buildings that will no longer exist?
Right.
Okay? And, just making sure, and the, is this going to come out of fund balance, or is this coming out of our revitalization plan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
Current revitalization.
I think we should keep the order authorizing the tax building bonds as a regular item for next week unless someone else has any questions or comments about that. Dr. Brandon, will you be presenting that next week?
Well, I, I don't know.
Jeff?
In different district, so we can't attend next Monday night, but...
You'll present that?
If the board were to have a question, you'll send it, and we'll make sure it gets answered before.
I just think it's important that the public understand that the reason we're issuing all those bonds is because of the hold harmless and the fact that that will save the local taxpayer $80 million, so...
We'll have a presentation to reiterate what Mr. Roberts said tonight.
Perfect. Let's do that as a regular then. It can be the same presentation. And then delivery method for bond projects, let's make that regular as well. I know RJ just kind of gave us a spiel on that. If anyone has questions about that, let's make sure we email or question, send to Dr. Moran this week so that we can make sure those are addressed, because we want to make sure we can start getting those, or those packages out so that we can stay on schedule. So if there are questions about how we want to do that, or where we, how we want to do that, let's make sure that that comes to Dr. Moran this week so that we can have a robust discussion and decide how to do each of those next week. Sound good? And then the delegate and the alternate delegate for TASB convention, that is, Mrs. Mizell Flint and Mr. Gaiagos says, per our normal, our normal... Yeah, you said yes, I saw the email. So we're going to keep that as a, we're going to keep that as a consent. We do need to go into executive session very quickly under Personnel Matters, 551.074, and we'll be right back. All right. We have returned from executive session. We took no action and made no votes. With that, our only thing left is our announcements, which we'll have a regular board meeting next week. Then we have our finance and pre-agenda workshop on July 14, and a regular board meeting on July 21. Unless I have any other board comments or questions, with that, we're adjourned.